Thank you, Andy. So I'm going to call to order at 6:04 for the regular meeting. A pledge of allegiance will be by Councilmember Bracco. We'll all please stand and remain standing for invocation by Pastor Malcolm McPhail.
Please join me in ready salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. I do want to say thank you for your service and just appreciate all you're doing and your concerns for the future of our city on a regular basis, daily, I would assume, you think about it. I read a quote recently that says, "If I were to let my life be taken over by what is urgent, I might very well never get around to what is essential." That was written by a Catholic theologian. And it's so important that we remember the essential, important things that are taking place and not run by the important because of the many urgent things that we have to do. You have to do many important things, and sometimes the urgent can supersede that. And so, I want to encourage you to pay attention, take key items that are really important for the people and consider those as being important and essential, not just urgent, both kind of sometimes. Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you so much for the opportunity to pray for our city and to pray for our council and our mayor. Lord, I pray you'll give them wisdom. I pray that you will give them good character and integrity as they govern our city. Lord, keep our city safe. Watch over our first responders. Pay attention, Lord, we pray, to the gates of our city, that we would be kept safe and well-kept, God. I pray that you will bring them home safely at night, God. Thank you so much for those that keep our city safe and those that are in need of medical issues and other areas. Thank you so much for this night. Pray you'll give them wisdom as they continue, in Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, moving on to item number 1.4, City Clerk's Report on Posting of the Agenda.
Yes, Mayor, Council, the agenda was posted on Friday, April 4th, 2025, at 4:06 PM.
Thank you very much. Moving on to 1.5, Roll Call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Bracco.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Fugati.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Bozo.
Here. Item 1.6, Orders of the Day. We have one order of the day. Just as a reminder, for the past two meetings and this meeting, we will doing a hard stop or start, depending how you look at it, at exactly 7 o'clock or so for item number, excuse me, 8.1, to discuss our districting topic, and we'll do that at 7 o'clock. We wanted to do that for the public in the event that that was the only time that they could come. So if we change around the schedule a little bit, it's because of that. Moving on to item 1.7, Employee Introductions. And today, employee introduction will be done by Captain Juan Rocha, or, oh, Luke Powell, Captain Luke Powell, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of the community. It is my pleasure to introduce a new member of the City of Gilroy team, Detention Services Officer Talon Gray Peoples. Talon brings with him 16 years of law enforcement experience. He began his education at Evergreen Valley College, where he majored in art, before attending the Sacramento Regional Public Safety Training Academy, where he earns his Adult Corrections Certification. His law enforcement career began in 2008 as a correctional officer for the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office. In 2018, he lateraled to the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office as a correctional deputy, where he served six years. Over the course of his career, he gained a wide range of experience, including serving on the emergency response team, acting as a jail training officer, and working as an investigator for the Contact Tracing Investigations Unit. In his free time, Talon enjoys traveling with his family, watching movies, bodybuilding, and photography and videography. He is married to his junior high school sweetheart and is a proud father of two sons, ages 22 and 13. Please join me in welcoming Talon Gray Peoples to the City of Gilroy.
Good evening, everyone. Excited to be here. I'm grateful for being hired by a great city that has a lot of highly spoken words to say about the city, as well as the police department. I'm just looking forward to bonding with people I can call future family members, bringing my positive personality to this community, as well as sharing my experience and gaining experience with my agency and community. Thank you.
Moving on to item number two, Ceremonial Items. We have a couple of proclamations this evening, and I'm going to jump around in the order a little bit. But we have, first, I will read a proclamation for April, of April 2025 Arts and Culture and Creativity Month, and I believe the vice chair of the Arts and Culture Commission is here. Is Ruben here? Okay, there's Ruben. And after that, I will be reading a proclamation for in memorial for Said Vaziri and his family. And what I would like to do is, I will first read the proclamation for the Arts and Culture Commission, and Ruben, you will come up and receive the award, and then stand by, please. And after that, I will do the proclamation for the Vaziris, and then we would like to take a picture with you folks out here with all of council. And after they leave, Ruben, we will take a picture with you, please. Okay, thank you.
Here, or there?
Right here. Yeah.
Hi, how are you? Of course.
Okay, here's City of Gilroy Proclamation. Whereas the City of Gilroy celebrates and highlights the power of the arts and creativity to change our lives for the better, and whereas Gilroy Arts and Culture Commission and SV Creates and the Gilroy Arts Roundtable work together to promote the value of the arts and to elevate Santa Clara County's creative culture, and whereas Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month of April is the seventh annual statewide awareness and advocacy event that recognizes the crucial role of arts, culture, and creativity in the lives of everyone in California, and whereas the City of Gilroy appreciates our relationship with SV Creates and recognize the arts and creativity support student success and lifelong learning, provide key job skills, and bring joy to our community. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, on the seventh day of April 2025, together with my colleagues on the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 25 as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month, and encourage everyone to celebrate the power of arts in our community. Thank you.
All right. Hello, thank you, Mayor, City Council. I appreciate the support. My name is Ruben Dariobilla, also known as Mr. Fuchila. I am an artist here in town, and I'm joined by my daughter Luna Deslan. She's a third grader at R. Kelly and also an aspiring artist. I'm a local Chicano artist based here in Gilroy, and I wear many hats. I'm the executive director of La Franda Festival, Gilroy's Dia de Muertos Festival and Wellness Fair. I serve as the vice chair of the Arts and Culture Commission for the city, and I also have the honor to sit on the steering committee for the Gilroy Arts Roundtable. The Gilroy Arts Roundtable, or GAR, is a grassroots collective of artists, arts leaders, and advocates, amplifying, building, and connecting to elevate the arts and culture in Gilroy South County and beyond. We meet on the last Wednesday of every month at the Gilroy Center for the Arts, and all creatives and arts advocates are welcome. And I actually, at this point, knowing that there's an officer with a arts background, I think that'd be cool to have him come out, too, so that'd be awesome. We've come a long way. In October of 2021, in partnership with SV Creates, whom we will be hearing about later on this evening, Gilroy artists and arts leaders convened to develop strategies for empowering local artists and local arts ecosystem to plant the seeds for what would become the thriving collective I proudly represent today. Over the last few years, GAR has served as an anchor in the local arts and culture, providing a space for creatives to connect and share resources and spark collaborations to serve our community. And bigger than its individual members, GAR represents a hub and spoke in the wheel of arts and culture, and people are starting to take notice. Beyond addressing our own arts and culture ecosystem needs, GAR serves as an exemplary case study for arts leaders in the surrounding counties. Over the last year, in partnership with SV Creates, we've had the privilege of not only hosting leaders from surrounding counties, but helping to nurture a concerted effort we currently call the Quad County Collective with San Benito, Santa Cruz, and Monterey Counties to bolster our arts advocacy efforts at the state level. All this is no accident. They say that luck is when preparation meets opportunity. Gilroy Arts and Culture doesn't need luck, we just need opportunities. And by that, I mean funding. We've been ready for the city and the community and the region to take notice, and we're not asking for a handout. We've put in the work over the last couple of years to show leaders and decision-making that arts and culture isn't just an issue of leisure or entertainment, but one of economic development. For example, in only two years, La Franda Festival alone has brought in over $700,000 to the local economy and paid out over $50,000 to local Gilroy artists, helping to foster the local creative economy. And that's not even accounting for the contributions of GDBA's Holiday Parade and Carastamal Festival as well. On behalf of the Gilroy Arts Roundtable and the greater arts and culture community, we strongly encourage a meaningful investment and prioritization of arts and culture in Gilroy as y'all step into your budget planning sessions. And finally, I'd like to have my daughter wrap this up.
My name is Luna Deslan. I am a third grader at R. Kelly Elementary, and I am an artist. I love to paint, and I dance for Manos Placórico. I represent the future generations of artists in Gilroy. The investments that you make today will help make it easier for me to live and work in Gilroy when I grow up. Thank you for the work you do and you for this opportunity to speak. Gracias.
Okay, next, I would like to invite up the Vaziri family. Okay, here's a proclamation and memorandum of Said Vaziri. Said Vaziri served as the City of Gilroy Senior Environmental Engineer from January 23, 2006 to March 7, 2025, and whereas it is with profound sadness that we acknowledge the unexpected passing of Said on March 7, 2025. He was a cherished member of the Gilroy team and is severely missed by his family, friends, and coworkers. And whereas Said was full of passion regarding his work at the South County Regional Wastewater Authority Plant and worked very hard to ensure efficient operation of the plant, sustainable solutions for wastewater treatment, recycled water options, and appropriate expansion to meet the future growth needs of Gilroy and Morgan Hill communities. And whereas Said was very proud of his top-notch services provided by the plant, and he received the Engineering Achievement of the Year Award from the California Water Environment Association. In addition, under Said's focused leadership, the plant was awarded Overall Plant of the Year, awarded nine times between 2005 and 2022 by the California Water Environment Association. And whereas, in addition to Said's professional achievements, he was also a very kind, honest, and humble person. He loved his family very much and often spoke about his wife Melissa and son Keon, a very proud husband and father. Now, therefore, I, Greg Bozo, Mayor of the City of Gilroy, and on behalf of the entire City Council, employees, and residents of Gilroy, join in sharing our deepest condolences and rememoring Said Vaziri for his unwavering dedication and commitment to public service. His legacy will live on at the plant, but most importantly, he will be remembered for how he positively impacted others who had the privilege to know him. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name's Keon, the proud son of my father here. He loved what he did. He was proud of what he did, all the work he put in, but more importantly, he was proud of the city. You know, he wanted to give back as much as possible to here. And beyond that, you know, it's very rare, I think, in life that you find something that you truly enjoy doing, right? And once you find it, a firm believer, you have to hold on to it. And he carried this aspect throughout every single time. So thank you all for giving him the opportunity to give back to this community. He loved every single moment of it. He refused to take time off work because he loved it so much. And so, to me, it's a humbling and a very blessed experience to know my father was so well-regarded, taken care of, and was able to provide for all of you. Words can't describe how much this means to my family and all my dad. If I was here, I'd be so damn proud, sorry for cursing. But he's been up here many times. I've seen him before, and it's interesting to be on the side of things. So before I keep rambling on for too long, I just want to say thank you to all of you and thank you to citizens over here, and thank you all. Truly means the world to us, and thank you for it again.
whole, please. please. Moving on to item number three, Council Correspondence. We have one item, the recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission regarding ranked locations for potential future pickleball courts in Gilroy. So more to discuss on that in future meetings. Moving on to item number four, Presentations to Council. 4.1, it's a presentation of the report for the Elevate the Arts Program by Alexandra Urbanauski from Silicon Valley Creates. Take it away, Alexandra.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Alexandra, CEO of SV Creates or Silicon Valley Creates. SV Creates is the arts council for Santa Clara County, providing resources and building capacity for the arts and service to healthy communities throughout our county and in coordination with our county government. I'm really happy to be here with you this evening, especially to thank you for your support of Arts in Gilroy and on this day when you made your proclamation. And I just came up from, or down from San Jose, where I was at the meeting of the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors earlier this afternoon, where they proclaimed April as Arts Month for our county, so the state, county, and the city, and here we are. So thank you. I'm here tonight to report to you on the second year results of the Elevate Gilroy Through the Arts Grant Program, which your funding helped make possible this past year. We launched this program two years ago with recognition that Gilroy Arts and Cultural Community had been historically under-resourced throughout our county. This program is the only city-specific program that we, SV Creates, offers in the county. All our other grant programs are county-wide, open from Gilroy to Palo Alto, San Jose, to Milpitas, and all the others in between. I'm going to leave our full annual report with the city clerk, which you can get later that tells you about all those programs, which are open to Gilroy artists and arts groups. As you can read in the full written report in your packet, SV Creates was able to leverage the $25,000 commitment from the City of Gilroy to run a competitive open grant cycle and award just over $55,000 in grants to five projects in the 2024-25 year. That $55,000 was further leveraged in grants by the artists and arts organizations that executed the projects to raise more than double that in cash and in-kind support, in addition to securing numerous volunteer hours. We believe the projects funded this year more than succeeded in meeting the objectives for the Elevate Program, which you can see listed here on the slide, as did the projects in the previous year. These objectives, as outlined in our original proposal to you two years ago, were to support the creation and presentation of culturally relevant artistic work, to raise the visibility and voice of local artists, to engage the community and activate public spaces through the arts, to catalyze capacity and resilience in our historically under-resourced arts ecosystem, to encourage and leverage other funding for the arts in Gilroy, and to rally public support of the arts as a key part of Gilroy's economic development. While you can read more about each of the projects in the report, and I'm sure many of you attended these festivals and other events, I want to highlight a few examples of the ways the projects, and in fact, the entire grant process, met the objectives. First, the application process itself included significant outreach in the local community to encourage local artists, residents, and businesses to form partnerships and develop projects for which to apply. We collaborated with the Gilroy Arts Roundtable to get the word out and hold workshops. SV Creates provided hands-on, customized application support and project development support to help potential applicants design strong projects and draft compelling applications. The grant review process engaged additional local residents on the grant review panel, engaging the community, catalyzing capacity, and raising visibility. The projects themselves activated public spaces and rallied support, just as we all have. Oh, there, thank you. The La Franda Festival itself, as you heard from Ruben, engaged 50 sponsors and community partners, generated economic activity for local artists and vendors, and saw approximately 10,000 attendees just this year. All the projects supported presentation of culturally relevant work, such as with exhibitions celebrating Latinx and Indigenous cultures at Gallery 1202. They raised the visibility of local artists and provided opportunities for youth at the Chalk Festival and other events. We're particularly excited about the involvement of youth for the Youth Mentorship Mural, which is being coordinated by Sixth Street Studios and the Shades of Brown Alliance with local youth, and will be completed on Railroad Alley behind Alchirito Market this spring and summer. All of the projects built resilience in the local arts community by encouraging partnerships between businesses, artists, and arts organizations. And I want to thank all of you for your partnership on this project. We're looking forward to continuing this work, and I think I can take a few questions if we have a few minutes left. Thank you.
Any questions from council? No questions?
Great. Thank you all, and again, thank you for recognizing the arts with your proclamation tonight.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 4.2, any public comment by members of the public of items not on the agenda but within the subject matter of the City Council.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we have one speaker, Jan Guffey.
Hello, my name's Jan Guffey. I'm a resident of Gilroy, and I'm here to invite you to our Earth Fair. The Earth Resource Fair is happening on Saturday, March, I mean, sorry, April 19th, for the first time in some years in Gilroy. It's a resource fair, it's community-based, and I, our group, the Environmental Action Committee of the AAUW, American Association of University Women, have been an eager participant in planning this event with the Community Agency for Resources Advocacy and Services, or CARAS. And it's a family-friendly event. There's going to be, it's all free, it's at San Isidro Park from 12 to 4. There's a bike cruise, and so we're encouraging families to bike to the park. There's going to be bike valet parking. There's going to be all free food and refreshments. There are 20 community services agencies or local agencies that are signed up to participate, including our library, and I believe the Parks and Recreation Commission is going to have a table there. There's all kinds of, there's an electric car expo, so we just invite you all to come and invite the community to come to this family-friendly event. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have no further speakers at this time.
Thank you. Before going on to number five, I just wanted to say once again to the Vaziri family, thank you for coming in, but I should have said this before, you are under no obligation whatsoever to sit here. This is a really long meeting, so you will not hurt any of our feelings if you decide that you want to go home and eat. So I didn't mean to kick you out, but I wanted to give you that option. Thank you very much for coming in, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number five, Reports of Councilmembers. Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, we had a meeting at the SCRAF facility, and after the South County Water Recycling Committee met, and I'm happy to report that with our recent rainfall, we're sitting good. Our reservoirs are almost full, and the snowpack is a record this year, so we're looking good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fugati. Councilmember Fugati.
Listening to report.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes, the Santa Clara County Habitat Governing and Implementation Boards met a few weeks ago. Their 2024 audit report states the Habitat Agency has a net increase of over $40 million in land acquisition, with most of the money coming from grants. Most of the Habitat's expenditures were for land restoration, which is a good thing. While most of California is seeing a decrease in the western burrowing owl population, which is putting this bird closer to being on the list as a threatened or endangered species, the areas that the Habitat oversees has seen a significant increase in the burrowing owl. In 2024, they saw an increase of 94 adults and 211 offspring, which doubled from 2023. One of the projects they have introduced for the owl is a juvenile wintering project, which keeps juveniles in enclosures, protecting them from predators until they are old enough to fend for themselves. This has significantly reduced the juvenile mortality rate. Another project identifies two new reintroduction sites at higher elevations for 2025. The mothers are kept in enclosures with their eggs. The baby owls stay in the enclosure for a period of time until they are banded and ready to start their own families. Sometimes this takes up to a year. The captive breeding facility keeps two pairs of owls in the facility for two years. After these owls are released, they then bring in four pairs to repeat the process. This technique has met with breeding success. And that was the meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. From the Caltrans Policy Group, safety is Caltrans' top priority when delivering service across the corridor. The agency has begun installing rail sentry and AI-powered light detection and ranging and camera system at the Churchill Avenue in Palo Alto. Developed by Herzog, this system detects lingering vehicles or objects on the tracks and alerts dispatchers to prevent collisions. Caltrans will work closely with local communities and transportation agencies to ensure the safety enhancements align with regional traffic patterns and infrastructure improvements. The Monterey County Rail Extension Project extends Caltrans passenger rail service from Santa Clara County south to Salinas. This is a transformative project that will revitalize the downtown Salinas train station and create new multimodal hubs for the disadvantaged communities of the Pajaro and Castroville neighborhoods. Improvements are underway and include a train layover facility in Salinas and improvements to the track systems between Salinas and Gilroy. From Santa Clara County, LAFCO, as many of you might know, I was appointed as an alternate to LAFCO by the City Selection Committee, which is a part of the Cities Association of Santa Clara County. It represents all cities in Santa Clara County. I supported the action taken in January by the Board of Supervisors to dissolve the South Santa Clara County Fire Department and annexing territories into the Santa Clara County Central Fire Protection District. These actions also were taken last week at the LAFCO meeting. The city of Gilroy has been impacted by operational decisions over the years by the South Santa Clara County Fire Department. Engine 69 or Tree Haven, which is located out of Gilroy Gardens through the mutual drop borders auto aid agreement, provides first due responses to the areas within the city of Gilroy like Eagle Ridge and Heartland neighborhoods. On any given day, that station can be downgraded from providing advanced life-saving to basic life-saving services, staffing two on a fire engine as opposed to three, moved up into the city of Morgan Hill to provide coverage while leaving our district empty and not staffing Engine 69 for the day and close it. Any percentage of the times these occur adds to the structural failure and impending insolvency of South Santa Clara County Fire Department and those impacted residents. They have also been underfunded and underserved in terms of fire protection. The county fire chief and county executive reaffirmed their commitment to working with the city of Gilroy on any drop border agreements. County Fire Department will continue hosting office hours through April 18th at the Six Sanchez Government Center in San Martin, as the department looks forward to building relationships within the community, including staff and electeds, and have their staff available to address questions regarding the upcoming transition. County Fire will take over the service beginning July 1st, 2025, and assume the lease from Tree Haven Gilroy Gardens Fire Station with the city of Gilroy. Thank you.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes, I attended the Housing and Community Development Advisory Committee meeting on Friday, April 4th. I represent Gilroy on this regional committee. Just for a little bit of history, Gilroy does not participate in the county's urban CDBG because we are an entitled city, which means that we have our own CDBG funding. But as of 2018, Gilroy is part of the county's home funding consortium. The county is the rep to home funding. This is federal funding that Gilroy cannot get on its own. Even though we were a part of this consortium in 2018, we did not get invited to participate at the table until 2023, they did not have a meeting in 2023, so last year was the first time we had a rep. At the meeting, I worked closely with Ms. Goey, the Director of Community Development in Gilroy, had a lot of conversations, and so I asked basically a number of questions that I wanted them to understand that Gilroy is a part of this consortium, and given that we have the highest unhoused population in the county and that we have the lowest per capita income in the county, that we need to get our fair share of this funding. So the questions that I asked really were surrounding how we can be more actively involved and participate in the conversation, and so I felt it was good to participate. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, part of being part of the Mobility Partnership Group, we are focused around the BTA US 101 State Route 25 interchange project, which is going full bore now, starting this month. So I just wanted to give you some bullet points as to what's happening and be aware of. Construction began this month and is expected to be completed by the end of 2027. During the initial construction phase, the community can expect utility relocation to accommodate the new interchange layout, tree removal, and designated areas to prepare for roadway expansion, permanent closure, and this is a big one, of Castro Valley Road and Mesa Road, which will restrict access to and from southbound US 101 beginning April 16th, 2025. So that's just around the corner, and that is permanent. Following the completion of this construction, a one-year plant establishment period will take place to ensure all landscaping is properly maintained before the project is finalized. In Phase Two, and this is the big one, and this is where your involvement's going to be helpful to just contact your local supervisor and the funding, because that's the big deal. Phase Two of the interchange project is planned to connect State Route 25 to Santa Teresa Boulevard, further enhancing regional connectivity. Construction for Phase Two is anticipated to take place between 2027 and 2029. However, and that's the caveat, funding for this phase has not yet been secured. So from this point, we just need to put pressure on to get the project funded, because it's, we're going to be desperately in need of that opening up so we can get traffic going, you know, north and south the way it should be going and taking care of everyone, so that's my report.
Thank you. I have one quick report from one of the committees. I'm on Gilroy Gardens Board. As many of you hopefully have heard, that Gilroy Gardens has a conditional approval of having a small return of a garlic festival there, and I wanted to make things clear, there's still a little bit of confusion. They want to have a garlic festival in the area below Gilroy Gardens, not inside the park, where you know there are rides and park activities. It's going to be below that in a grass area. And again, it's a conditional permit, just like any permit of an event, a parade, anything like that, a lot of conditions have to be met, and those are the things that are being worked out right now. So have some patience for the Garlic Festival Association and Gilroy Gardens to get this worked out. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, the Consent Calendar, any public comment?
No speakers at this time.
Okay, council, any members of council would like to pull any of the items from Consent Calendar? No items? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion for item 6.1 through 6.6 on the Consent Calendar.
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilmember Klein. Do I have a first? Sorry, I didn't hear it. I did not hear it, I'm sorry. So I have a motion from Councilmember Bracco, and a second from Councilmember Klein. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugati.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
And Mayor Bozum.
Yes, motion passes 7-0. Okay, moving on to item seven, 7.1, award a contract to Ascend Environmental for the development of a Gilroy Vehicle Miles Travelled Greenhouse Gas Reduction Program in the amount of $473,841, which is partially funded by a Caltrans grant of $335,529. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the community. Tonight is really our follow-up on the Caltrans grant that the city was awarded last year. The city council's legislative agenda and community development department's work plan have these items, Climate Action Plan, Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan, VMT Reduction Policy, and TDM Transportation Demand Management Guidelines. We've been having these items on our plan for the last two budget cycles, and they're grant-dependent. And last year, the city was awarded $335,000 of a Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant from Caltrans. The grant requires a minimum of $43,000 local match. Caltrans also indicated in their guidelines that environmental studies under CEQA is not eligible for this grant. Therefore, local funding is needed to complete the environmental compliance for this project. Development of a Climate Action Plan and the city-wide VMT Reduction Policy and TDM Guidelines will help the city implement the 2040 General Plan and develop a detailed and strategic framework for measuring, planning, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. This effort will also help streamline project review by developing a menu of mitigation measures that an applicant can choose from to satisfy their CEQA compliance requirements. On November 8, 2024, Caltrans authorized the city to begin the work under the grant. So we began the RFP process. Following the RFP process, we received and reviewed five proposals. Ascend Environmental was identified by the evaluation team as the proposal that would best meet the needs of the city. Ascend included in their proposal a VMT GHG reduction program that would attain the grant deliverables, and they also included optional tasks that would complement the VMT GHG reduction program work, and also benefit the city in meeting state requirements in a cost-efficient manner. Ascend's proposal was also forwarded to Caltrans for review to ensure the proposal meets the grant requirements. So first, their scope of work included developing the Climate Action Plan and VMT Policy and TDM Guidelines. And these tasks total $335,000, which includes a contingency of $28,000. As I mentioned, they also included some optional tasks. First is enhanced community engagement for $33,025. The enhanced community engagement effort provides pop-up events and community workshops as additional community outreach to obtain public input. They also include a CEQA documentation. Environmental compliance is a required step in the adoption of a Climate Action Plan. But as we mentioned, the Caltrans grant will not fund CEQA documentation, so therefore, this is shown as optional under the grant funding, but it's a required step. So local funding must be utilized to complete this requirement to meet state law. Another optional work is the Safety Element Update for $66,000. And the city's general plan has this potential hazards element, which is also known as the safety element, and is required to be updated per state law. And since the resilience and adaptation planning strategies would have been part of the work to develop the Climate Action Plan, Ascend will be well-positioned to build upon this work in order to update the city's safety element. If the city were to do the safety element update separately under a different contract, it would be at a higher cost, because the new consultant would have to gather and analyze all the information and data. So based on what we just described in this assessment, in conjunction with the Caltrans grant that the city secured, staff recommends awarding the contract to Ascend for the VMT GHG Reduction Program and the tasks we just talked about, which includes the enhanced community engagement, CEQA documentation, and safety element update for a total amount of $473,841. And doing this will enable staff to complete the legislative agenda and work plan items and fulfill state mandates. In the second half of the chart, that's where the funding source is coming from. As we mentioned, the Caltrans grant of $335,000 was awarded, and that requires a local match of $43,000, and we have budgeted that in our department's current fiscal year budget. And we also have budgeted a sufficient amount, which is this remainder of $94,841, for the entire contract amount. And as for alternatives, the first one, award a contract of $440,000, that basically excludes that enhanced community engagement piece, because CEQA documentation is required in the safety element update. If we don't do it with this consultant, you know, it will be more costly to do a separate one. So that staff's, you know, recommended for an alternative, if council were to seek an alternative, and that totals $440,000. And that reduces the last piece of that local funding that's required, so it drops from, you know, the previous slide, which is the $94,841, to $61,816. And then another option is to not authorize a contract with Ascend. Staff doesn't recommend this option, because this means the city would default on the Caltrans grant and lose the state funding. And yet, you know, these are legislative items that we need to complete, so. So as mentioned, staff's recommended contract amount is the $473,841, and the approved fiscal year 25 budget for community development department does include adequate funding for that local funding portion of what I just showed you. And the next steps is going to involve, once council approves it, staff will be executing the contract and start working with the consultant to complete the scope of work. And the Caltrans grant has an expiration date of June 30th, 2027, so the project should be completed by May 2027, so that we have at least some time to complete the administrative portion of the work to close out the grant. So here's staff's recommendations to award a contract to Ascend Environmental for the development of a Gilroy VMT GHG Reduction Program, including the tasks of enhanced community engagement, CEQA documentation, and safety element update in the amount of $473,841, and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents. And staff is here to answer any questions. There's also a representative from Ascend Environmental that's available to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Fugati.
Question for you. A few months back, there was an applicant who I think is still in process heatwave, who was building some warehouses, and I know that I contacted your office, and we had discussed the charging stations that they were required that seemed to be in excess, and you had mentioned to me something at that time, that if we had something in place, that there would have been alternatives. Is this that thing?
Yes. Yeah, and it's because we don't have our own Climate Action Plan, we have to follow the requirements under the Bay Area Air Quality Management District.
So instead of building 17 charging stations for their warehouse, or whatever it happened to be, they would have been able to choose from a menu of other things that you would have offered to them that they could have done differently?
Yes. So basically, this effort allows us to develop more localized strategies and approaches.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you for your report. I just have a couple of questions. So the consultant is offering us a menu, so we can then, at that point, when this is all done and it's finalized, then we as a city have an opportunity to choose from that menu in terms of deciding the minimum and maximum requirements? Am I understanding that correctly?
If the Ascend representatives would like to come up.
And I guess I'm asking really about the flexibility of what we can do once this report is finalized? Can we choose from this and choose to just -- Can we choose from this and choose to just select the minimum requirements all the way up to the maximum requirements?
Yes, I think anything kind of within...
Can you speak closer to the mic, please?
Yes, whatever kind of falls within whatever the state requires, you know, the city has discretion within that. We would kind of rely on you guys to determine how aggressive or not aggressive you guys would choose to be.
Thank you. And I'm assuming it's too late for us to develop our own CAP and VMT policies at this point, which is why we're consulting?
I think generally, this is the type of thing that cities and counties hire consultants to do. It's my understanding of it.
And given that we are a charter city, is there any difference between the requirements for us as a charter city and for a non-charter city?
That's a good question. I'm not as familiar with the charter city status, so that's definitely something that we could look into. And if there are things that, you know, you guys have more leeway or things like that to do based on that status, then...
If I might, as city attorney, I would say this is not one of those.
Okay. Okay. And this, just to confirm with you, is not coming, this is coming from the community development budget, not... Okay. And so my concern is, ultimately, my concern is, while, you know, I support, you know, climate and all of these wonderful things, I do not want this report to then dictate how we have to charge our citizens for miles driven. Until we have a robust public transportation options for our citizens, I would hate to see this become additional costs for anyone here. So that minimum-maximum is really important to me, and then we can choose.
Yeah, I think, again, you know, we, as consultants, we would take your guys' cues on things like that. You know, things that, you know, might cost citizens money or things like that. Those are things that we would ask you about and take your leave on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at landscapers and all the equipment they have and, you know, doing a bus and then riding a bike from the bus station or the train station to where they need to work. I mean, it's just, it's just not conducive, right? And at the same time, I do not want there to be, you know, where people with higher incomes then have to pay, you know... I just don't like the idea of having to pay for driving miles when we do not have a viable public transportation options for us here. The other question I have is, how is the law stated with, and maybe this is a question for you, Jimmy, city citizens? So are the citizens, the citizens of Gilroy that drive maybe all the way to Palo Alto or Redwood City, or is it, you know, is it city stuff? So if people drive to Gilroy, so if our firefighters that live in Sonoma drive to Gilroy to do their job here, where would that tax be?
If I might briefly, I believe the purpose of this, developing a VMT Greenhouse Gas Reduction Program, is more to deal with new projects and to analyze the impacts that they have. It's not really designed to put a tax on local drivers either way.
But we have then the opportunity, and I do not know the correct language, I apologize. In our general plan, we have it so that if you're at a red light, basically, you only have to wait one time. I don't know what the terminology is for that. But in, we can keep it at that. We would have the option of keeping it to that general plan so that the cost to the developers to keep it less expensive, you know, we wouldn't have to wait two or three times to get through a red light.
I think that's the way we used to do traffic all the time, level of service. Level of service, A, B, C, D, E, and so on. And our general plan still has some of that. But in 20, roughly 2018, the state ordered everybody to switch for doing CEQA documentation to measuring traffic not by level of service, unless you have a new general plan, but primarily by vehicle's mile, vehicle miles traveled. And the idea of having this greenhouse gas reduction program and the plan is that we don't have to reinvent the wheel with every environmental document. That's kind of what we have to do now. And it's very, it's kind of ad hoc, it's expensive, it's confusing. The developer doesn't necessarily know exactly what they have to do. But with the greenhouse gas reduction program that is going to be developed, the idea is that there will be a menu of options for different kinds of projects, and those can be chosen, and then they're understood, and they're fair, and they're balanced.
So we're not being dictated what we have to do?
Exactly, yeah. And VMT is sort of a proxy for greenhouse gas and air quality. It's not exactly that. It's a peculiar thing. And in fact, there was just a case that came out where the County of San Diego established VMT thresholds, and a court actually turned them down because San Diego did not prove that infill development was better for VMT than sprawl, which is bizarre because the whole concept of planning that we've been doing for many years says that. Says that we want to do compact infill development, and that will reduce VMT. So it's a highly technical area. I mentioned this to indicate in part why we have consultants who do this. It's a very technical, complex area because you don't really measure VMT either. It's a computer calculation. But it pretty much has to be done, or there can be very difficult ways to approve development in the future.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, I have Councilmember Marks and then Councilmember Hilton.
I'm having a hard time with this because I kind of see where we're going to go. And even though this has to do with development, developers are not going to absorb this cost. It's going to be the citizen. And with Plan Bay Area 2050, they have talked a lot about vehicle miles traveled as a tax to the citizen. And with everything going up, food, gas, clothing, everything, your affordable housing is no longer affordable. How in the world can we, as a government, tax people to go to work? And this is where, and it might not happen next year or the year after, but long-term, this is where we're headed with vehicle miles traveled. In South County, we do not have the type of transportation that if you're going to work in Palo Alto, you can jump on a train and go and be there in an efficient amount of time. I read in our staff report how our emissions have gone up. Of course, they've gone up. Look at all the housing we've been building. And look at all the housing Hollister and San Juan and Salinas, they're all building. If these people all work north, they're going to be idling on 101, and our emissions are not going to go down. So I am really conflicted over this because if we spend the Money to Write Report, we know that we're going to have to do it. And you talk about a menu of items that we can choose from, but there's nothing concrete. I don't know what's in that menu. I think that would help me to support this a lot better if I knew what our choices were going to be.
Sure. Well, I guess, like, the first thing I'd say is that those menus of choices and what that plan looks like, what goes into it. Again, we would take direction from you guys, from the community. So if there are things that, you know, this community is not interested in, then we wouldn't include those things. So, you know, this plan is supposed to kind of reflect the wills of the community. And then I guess the other thing I would say is these are typically long-term planning efforts. So we might be looking out to, like, 2045 or something like that. So at that point, I think we can expect those transit systems to be built out a little bit more. There's kind of, you know, state and regional planning. So I think some of those options that might not be available now, we're hoping will be available in the future.
But we're also hoping for high-speed rail to be done by now, and it's not even basically begun. I don't know. I don't trust where the end is going on this, and I just don't want to see the public hurt by it in the end.
We absolutely don't want to see the public hurt either. That's, you know, that's why we're here to talk to the community and, you know, listen.
And I guess what I'm also afraid of is that we're going to be backed into a corner where when we talk about the menu items, all of a sudden, we're going to be told the state or the county is not allowing this, or they're not allowing that. So what we might want might never get done. Just my thoughts.
Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you. So whether we approve this tonight or not, we could either bring this in locally, bring this in with the community and have it be our choices, or like the city attorney says, it's going to be an ad hoc. Developers that want to develop and, you know, contribute to our economy here are just going to go through a, basically, that ad hoc decision where they're going to come to staff. They're like, I don't know, how should we reduce our VMT? We have to. It's required by law. What this will do is this will bring it, this will bring it in-house. And if you go back to talking about Heatwave, the good thing for them, I mean, they were already here in our community, but for someone as large as them, and they're going to bring their corporate headquarters here, it goes back to the streamlining point that staff talked about where it'll give them a choices that we all come up with and the community comes up with, but we control those choices, and we give it to them ahead of time so that way they know how to plan it. They're like, ah, you know what? We don't really need, we don't have that too many people commuting from far away. We all live here in town. Let's choose something else. And, but it allows them to do it, but it's, it's our decisions that we own. And if we feel like we want to change it, just like we own objective design standards, right? We tell the, we tell the community, hey, you can do this ministerially, that's fine. Here's our objective design standards that we require on residential. It doesn't mean you have to conform or demand, but it means that you have choices when it comes to the play structures. You have choices when it comes to, you know, certain things. So that's what'll end up coming back here to CEQA ministerial. And as far as the transient and stuff goes, having a plan like this, rather than relying on VTA, which we are now, to do these modeling for us, even though we're a part of VTA, staff's part of VTA, we actually control what they end up putting on their VTA thing. It's not, it's not local to what Gilroy wants. And we had talked a lot about in our strategic planning session, too, to protect the transit that we do have, right? We don't want to, that's the minimum, but we also need to have good programs and policies to show the reason that we want to protect what we have, and all we want is more.
Any further questions? Sure.
Is there a re-up or an ongoing fee once we have this? So every two or three years, we have to go through a similar process or five years or 10 years where we still have to hire you and pay you another few hundred thousand dollars to keep it going or to refresh it?
You don't have to answer that. As she comes up, this is the way I view it, because we did objective design standards. We own that. The city owns it. We're not, we're not licensed with the contractor forever. So if we see things we want to pull out and change, that's your ability to do that.
Basically, through a regulation or other reason that we have to keep it up to date by pulling in and rewriting it or bringing it up to date, that we would have to bring a consultant back in to do that again at certain intervals. I'm just unaware.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that right now, but, you know, for example, in some of my prior cities, they developed a Climate Action Plan twelve years, twelve years ago, for example. And then, you know, 10 years later, just, you know, with everything happening in the city, they decided they wanted to do an update.
I think that's the case. It's not like the housing element where there's fixed eight-year cycles. It would be more of a, if it gets outdated at some point, it has to be redone.
And it really allows us to react to the community. Like, if something happened last month, or somebody's on one of these regional bodies, the mobility, and you find out something, you know, you come back and you're like, you know what? Like, I just found a new, a new VMT measure that works really well in this other city. We should add that. We don't have to go back out to the world to do an RFP. We can literally change that little piece right there. That's exactly what we do with objective design standards, too. And even if something, even if a state law does come down and they say, hey, you guys, everybody needs to change this, you just make the change. You don't have to pay any, any money besides staff time.
Okay, I have one question. I need help understanding. I've heard comments here about taxes, a fee and things like that for driving. And so I'm not sure if this is for the city attorney or the city manager. Is that fee also, would that fee be a tax? And if so, is that something that has to be decided by the voters?
I think there's no contemplation of such a fee at this time.
If there was.
I suppose it would depend on how it was assessed. We've never, we have not thought about it at all, frankly.
Mr. Mayor, I can help with that question a little bit. There was only one agency in the entire state that even did a pilot program, and that was San Diego, which the city attorney mentioned. And it was a program to measure the mileage and to determine how, after 2030, such a tax would be implemented. So that never made it, it never made it to that point. It was canceled by the, I think, the San Diego Area Governments Association. And so there are no active programs currently in the state of California. In fact, there's only three states in the United States that have such programs, and California's not one of them. Oregon is, Hawaii, and Virginia are the three I can recall. So to answer if it's a tax or not, we don't know because there's no program. But usually, in the state of California, through certain propositions, if you say the word "tax", it does have to go to the voters. That's why the term "tax" and "fee" are used very carefully in California. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff at this time? Okay, moving on to public comment. Mr. Mayor, council, we have one speaker, Ron Kirkish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a very good question. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Forbes is right. There's only been one San Diego, I think it was, like he said. But Plan Bay Area 2050 is rife with issues discussing VMT and the cost per mile on the freeways, on the expressways through the center of town. So it is rife, and it's something that A-Bag is pushing along with another utility. Thank you, Sharon, for your presentation. Greenhouse Gas GHG Reduction Program. That's what this is all about. It's to reduce the greenhouse gases, the carbon supposedly. And how are they going to do that? The mitigation is very, very important. And I agree with Councilwoman Marks that we don't understand what the mitigation's issues are. I can think of a couple from my previous research on this stuff. It's get rid of parking, have no parking in the city, narrow the streets. And why would they do that? To stop cars. If you stop cars, you reduce the greenhouse gases. I think that's what I want to leave you all to think about. This is where we're going. And if you ever take the time to replan Plan Bay Area 2050, you really should to see what they have in the future for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
We have no additional speakers.
Sorry. Any further comments or questions from council?
I just want to reiterate. So we are implementing our general plan with this. We already do it. We're trying to bring it in-house, control it ourselves. We're using grant funds. So thank you to staff for doing that. That's one thing that we've always asked them to do. And, you know, more or less, this is making it predictable for the development community and the community at large that wants to develop and invest in Gilroy. It's making it easier for them. It's making it clear. It's making it more ministerial. There's no guessing. There's no extra consultant fees that anybody else has to, you know, has to go out and pay and absorb. So if nobody else has any comments, I'd like to make the motion to award a contract to Ascend Environmental, Inc., in the amount of four hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and forty-one for preparation of the VMT GHG Reduction Program and authorize the city administrator to execute the contract and associated documents.
Any other comments?
If you had something to say, I'm sorry if I cut you off.
I can support it without the thirty-three thousand, which is recommendation two.
So Councilmember Hilton, would you like to make a friendly amendment?
Can you pull up those options again?
So Alternative 1, I think, is what you're referring to?
Yeah, Alternative 1.
Without, yeah, Enhanced Community Engagement? So that would be the numbers, four hundred and forty...
Without which ones?
Four hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and sixteen.
That's what I'm saying. Which thirty thousand are you talking about from here that you want to pull up?
She's showing you right here what the, what it is without it.
Yeah, without that.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to see right this morning.
Right, so if you go back one slide, then you'll see, or maybe two slides, and you'll see...
Yeah, this is the full proposal.
Pull the Enhanced Community Engagement.
That's the one optional thing that she listed for us that was not required. Isn't that correct, Sharon?
Correct. And that's why we provide, so this is the full proposal on the screen here and the full funding source. And then the alternatives, two alternatives we provided, council. One is the first one, which, you know, includes everything except Enhanced Community Engagement. And then the second is not to do a contract.
So I would totally support that.
I mean, I like community engagement. I don't need enhanced.
No, no, we don't. And I'll tell you the reason why, because we have perfect examples. We have two perfect examples about, of how us, Gilroy, staff, and us, as the elected, can do really good community engagement. the electeds can do really good community engagement. And that's through objective design standards. We did that through the community. We are all connected within the community to go out there and ask them. And district elections. I mean, we're doing that on our own. That's, that's our own staff doing it. So I'm totally fine with that friendly amendment.
With that, I'll second.
Okay, so let's see if I got this right. I have a, I have a first and a second to award a contract to Ascend Environmental, Inc., for the development of Gilroy Vehicle Miles Traveled Greenhouse Gas Reduction Program minus the cost of community engagement.
If you go back, we can get it.
It's alternative one.
Yeah, it's alternative one. So that's the number there.
Okay.
And then I'm going to go to the recommendation slide. Okay.
Thank you. I see it there. For, for the amount of, can you go back to that so I can see it again?
Yeah.
For the amount of $440,816.
Thank you. You don't need the recommendation. I got it.
No, because this is, you know, including tasks of enhanced. So I was going to just remove that. Including the tasks of CEQA, documentation, and safety element update.
You okay with that?
As long as staff.
You okay with that?
As long as they understand it. It's the 440,000 and change.
Yes. To, to, to review, $440,816.
There we go.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bracco?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Bozo?
Yes. Motion passes five to two. Okay. As I said earlier this evening, we would like to start our public hearing on item 8.1, the hearing regarding the city's transition from at-large to district-based elections. Our goal was seven o'clock, so sorry we're 15 minutes late. But Liz would like to come up, please, and I'll read the full agenda item. "For the purpose of receiving the demographer's presentation on the transition process, the information received regarding communities of interest in the city, the possible contours of six districts, the drawing of maps by redistricting partners, the review of maps submitted on the city's website by other means, and the presentation of legally compliant draft maps to the city council for the six new districts as well as the order of elections for 2026 and 2028." Would you like to start first? And before the city attorney starts, I would just like to say to the public, thank you. We did receive your online comments. Thank you very much. And take it away, Andy.
Yes, well, this is the third required public hearing out of five that we've had in the districting process. This is all pursuant to the Safe Harbor Law and state law that we have been following. And this one, as you pretty much indicated, Mr. Mayor, is for the purpose of discussing communities of interest. And the public testimony has been received on that. And there have been two workshops that have given input as well, as well as discussing maps that have been produced by the public using the website or by other means and by redistricting partners itself. So this is not an action meeting in the sense that the council's not expected to take any binding action tonight. However, you can question redistricting partners, Liz Stitt. You can talk about maps. You can ask them to do certain future map calculations, or look at other issues, or look at different communities of interest, or whatever it is that strikes your, your fancy. And of course, the public can do the same with the public hearing. So let me, if I can, turn it over then to Liz Stitt of Redistricting Partners, who will explain further.
Great. Thank you. And it's good to see everyone again. We're shifting gears today. So the first two meetings were devoted to public comments, gathering testimony, educating folks on the districting process. Tonight is about maps and the feedback we've received from the public. So we'll real quickly go through the tradition, traditional districting principles that we use to draw the maps. We'll go through the trends of the maps that we saw from the public. Then we're going to get into our three draft maps based on public comments and public maps. Go over the public hearing schedule and what's next. This is going to be a relatively short presentation compared to the first two, because I'm hoping the bulk of this conversation will be discussing the maps and of course, hearing from the public and the public comment period. So you all have seen this before. This is the districting principles we use. Each district should be relatively equal in population. They should be contiguous, maintain communities of interest. Lines should be easy to identify. They should be understandable. And then keep districts compact. So we're avoiding those funny-looking shapes that people associate with cherry-mandering. We received a total of 27 maps that were submitted prior to the seven-day deadline. So if you submitted a map after that seven-day posting requirement, we're going to be talking about it at the next meeting. These maps are of course, up for discussion. We're not going to have time to go over all of the public maps, so I'm just going to go over trends. But when you guys want to talk about maps, you can ask me to pull up a map and we can pull it up on Districter. There were a couple of trends that we mostly saw. There were the east side, so keeping the east side whole or dividing it north and south. We also saw maps that divided the east side into three. I don't recommend that because then it brings the east side with the west side. And one of the things that we heard the most in testimony is the east side is a community of interest. And remember, we want to keep communities of interest together as much as possible. Another trend we saw on the west side. So how are we going to divide the west side? We saw Hecker Pass Highway used as a divider. Or we saw a more compact district in the north. So those are some of the trends that we saw on the west side. Getting into the draft maps, we have Draft Map A. So this is based on ID 290309. I believe that was JH07. This does create an east side district, and it uses Hecker Pass as a highway or as a divider. Here's the map in full. Folks can have access to it on the website, or it's uploaded on Districter as well. So if you want to zoom in, you can go on Districter and look at it that way. When we look at the total deviation, I believe it's 7%. And it does have four districts that have a Latino CVAP of over 50%. We have Draft Map B. Again, this is based on a public map. This is based on ID 290307. This takes the other option of dividing the east side into north and west, or excuse me, north and south. And then again, the west side uses Hecker Pass Highway as a divider. And here it is, and blown up. And then when we look at the total deviation, let's see, 6.8%. And again, we have a, we have four districts that have a Latino CVAP of over 50%. Draft C, this is not based on a public map per se, but it's based on public commentary. So there was a community of interest map submitted that highlighted the west side neighborhoods. So we use those neighborhoods to craft the west side districts. And here it is in full. Total deviation is 6.9%. And again, we have four districts with a Latino CVAP of over 50%. So here's the public hearing schedule. Over the last couple of weeks, we did have two community workshops. Very grateful for everyone who showed up. We did get a lot of feedback that way. They were well-attended. And hoping folks will continue to participate throughout this process. Tonight is hearing number three. We have the next hearing, which is arguably going to be your most difficult. Tonight, you'll have the opportunity to look at maps and decide which styles you like and give me feedback on what kind of changes you want to see in the maps. At the next meeting, you'll hopefully narrow down the maps to one or two. So you'll be in a place at the fifth meeting to eventually vote on a map. So we're in the process of whittling it down and getting it to a point where you feel comfortable with it. Just as a reminder, this is a jumping-off point. None of these maps are created to be the final map. So I fully anticipate feedback that requests changes to a map. You can even throw out maps if you don't like them, if you feel like they don't represent the city well. And then these adjustments can be made, and then they'll be sent to staff. We're a little posted on the website at least seven days before your next meeting. So that is the presentation, much shorter. But again, hoping to have a conversation about what you like, what you don't like, especially with the different options. How do you want to see the east side versus the west side? And how you want to configure the middle of the city. And of course, I know you'll want to open it up to the public as well. But I will kick it back to the mayor.
Thank you, sir. So is there any way that you could add, I don't know if it's possible or not with the app or the tool, to add more street names so that when we're looking at these maps, we can kind of see where the natural barriers are and things like that? It's difficult for me to see, you know, like, is that Miller Avenue? Is it, you know, especially when they kind of get a little bit squiggly and stuff?
Yeah. So you should have received a URL link that is associated with all of the PDFs. Hopefully you saw that. If not, we'll make sure you'll get the PD, or the URL links with the maps this coming meeting. But they're also on Districter. So we can pull it up on Districter and zoom in, and you'll see all of the street names.
So we have a packet full of maps. Did we get the URL in the packet that she's talking to? Where is that?
I think this is also a good example of what she's talking about too, or like if the general public just wanted to come, hey, which district do I live in? It's like, oh man, there's a lot of squiggly lines in there without actually going to a device and looking at it.
Yeah.
So maybe in the final end, if there's some way, you know, the, the public viewing ones, like when we all know where those natural barriers are without getting in the way of the, the district line.
Yeah. I'll see what we can do about adding that to those main PDFs. So you'll have hopefully some street names to go along with it.
Councilmember Fugazi?
The, thank you. And a lot of information to digest, for sure. And the mapping tool is really good. It does, does make it a little bit easier to, to envision some of these things. First question I have is the A, B, and C that we have here, you chose those yourself out of the maps that were submitted?
I did, yes.
And how did you make that decision?
I chose ones that I felt like represented the trends that we were seeing. It could have easily been, you know, a different map. So I chose them through just, you know, believing it was a decent map. Or if it was a map that wasn't quite balanced, I believe one of the maps didn't have, it was an over 10% deviation. And so I took that map and used it as a way to show how to bring it into compliance by, and I believe that's Map B, by making some changes.
And the maximum deviation is supposed to be what again?
Under 10%.
Under 10%, but is it considered better if it's two and then it's, if it's eight? So when we look at these, it's not necessarily to try to get it as close to zero as possible. It's just to get it under 10, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So it would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, it'd be more desirable to contain a community of interest and have a deviation of nine than it is to go try to include other areas to create more equality with the other districts. Is that correct?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. And so in, in looking at maps like, even say Map B, when you look in certain areas, I can't remember the number, but it's the red, the red one downtown where we have a, a carve-out for going west of Monterey from Fourth to like Eighth. It could seem very arbitrary based around how the, and you wouldn't necessarily know this, right? But based on the submitter of that. But it, it might have been done for numbers reasons where if it's put back so that it seems more normal for a community of interest, then it would be okay. Because I think, well, I guess what I'm getting at is I think it would be, again, really good for you to, to exemplify somehow or another to the public that your goal should not be to try to minimize that number necessarily, that it should be to make the best maps you can based on community of interest.
That's correct, yes. And I believe the map that this was based on was over 10%. So even at this stage, it's at 6.8% total deviation. So that's well within the, you know, the legal limit. But it's by no mean trying to make it as close to zero as possible. So really trying to respect the communities while also bringing it into compliance.
Okay, thank you.
I have just one more question. So at the public hearings and, and input that you received, when we talk about communities of interest, you've spoken a lot about the east side. What other communities of interest did you hear about that helped you to decide on these maps?
There was a great piece of testimony that was submitted over Districter, which was what Draft C was based off of. And it included a ton of neighborhoods and descriptions and important places. So that was very influential in C. But again, the bulk of the conversation that I've heard from the public is the east side is very different from the west side. So trying to respect those areas as much as possible. So we don't have any maps that are bringing together the west side and the east side in one district.
And is that, is, are those comments public?
I believe so, yes.
Where would we find those?
Definitely within the first meeting. So the recording in the first meeting. We did get some emails regarding how the east side is very different for this one woman, I believe.
Well, I mean, we, we've got all the emails. I just wondered if you just, if anybody sent you particularly comments that we would not have been.
Oh, you would have everything and I have.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I have a question for clarity, if you don't mind. At the beginning of this agenda item, we talked about or suggested that we would not take action tonight. But in your description of how, what may happen between tonight and the next meeting, to me seemed like you narrowed down a map to disc two almost by tonight. Okay, then I did not hear that correct.
So sorry.
I want to make sure that the public still has a chance between now and then to put in suggestions.
Absolutely. Tonight is about giving me direction on what kind of changes you want to see in the maps. Describe which maps you like and why. And then if there are any maps that you think you don't need to bring forward to the next meeting, you can get rid of some maps. So not technically, you're not taking any votes, you're just giving direction. At the fourth meeting, you'll get new maps that you tell me to make tonight. So you'll get additional maps and the public maps that are submitted. So you'll have more maps, but it's the fourth meeting when you really need to start whittling it down to one or two maps.
And the public can get to continue putting in information, building maps between now and then?
Yes.
Okay.
Encouraged.
And I, you know, as we talked about, I would really like to advocate for moving that last meeting to the 19th, is it? May 19th? So that when we get this input on May 5th, we don't have to, you know, we have time to think about it rather than just making that decision then as we're getting new information.
Right, so.
That way, public can come and talk.
Sure.
We can have time to think about it. And then on the 19th, there would be no more maps. There would be no more input. It would be just kind of a voting on the map based on all of that information.
I think maybe your dates are jumping around a little bit, right? The fourth meeting will be on the 19th. The fifth me-
No. No.
21st, excuse me, 21st. The fifth meeting will be on May 5th, right? And you're suggesting we may delay a vote until the second meeting of May?
May 19th.
May 19th, based on this information?
Yes.
Which you can do. We would still be within our 90-day window.
I just feel like it would be.
Okay. We don't have to decide that tonight, but it's a great suggestion for us to keep an open mind about. Any other comments or questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, one more question. So, in the material that we saw here, we, we have your three drafts, and then it also explained that in order to have another map considered, we would be the ones that would have to elevate it to a draft. Is that correct?
Yes. So, if there are any public maps that were submitted on DistrictR that you liked in particular, you can-
Or some coming up?
Um, yes. So, if there are any maps from the public that you want to uplift and call it a map or a draft, we can, you know, name that Draft D. So, you have the ability to request to look at any of the maps on DistrictR and make that a draft map.
And then, how do we do that? Do we send it to you or do we do it at a meeting?
You'll just do it at the meeting tonight or at the next meeting. But I, you know, tell me the number, I could pull it up on DistrictR, we can discuss it, and then the City Council will decide if they want to uplift it as a draft map.
So, we, I'm sorry. So, looking, you, looking through the packet, there were however many, 27 or however many, but, but there were a number that were disqualified. So, I looked at all of those that did qualify. I thought that all of those would be potential maps that we would be voting on. But what you're saying basically, as of right now, we would only vote on A, B, or C?
Um, no.
Unless I said, I'm looking at Map JHO1, I want that to be included, that would be Map D. But I would have to call it out and bring it forth.
Yes. That's, that's the way we recommend going forward with it. It signals to the public that you've identified a map that you want to consider seriously. So, they know that it's not just, you know, you're going to be randomly picking. It's like, you have looked at this, you have discussed it, and you have decided to bring it up as a draft.
Any individual or has to go to a vote?
Um, I, I've seen it done both ways. So, it depends on how you would prefer, you can, I mean, if there is a one member who wants to pull up a map and wants that as a draft map, I am open to that.
Well, I mean, I think it's important for the community to understand, because the way it kind of appears is that these all qualify, however many there were, I didn't count them, that these are all options, but really, they're not.
They're definitely all options.
Unless they're called out, right? But as it, as it is presented, you know, I think that that's, that could be a misunderstanding to the public, that, you know, if somebody is like, I really want, you know, this one map, they need to, you know, let one of us know, hey, call that map up.
And we did get testimony, sorry, go ahead.
Well, okay. So, basically, what I'm hearing is that if I want to send forth a map to a draft, I can do it right now, correct?
Yes. And hopefully with discussion.
Okay, J105.
Okay.
So, now what happens?
Well, we can, okay, so I can pull up J-
105.
JH-05.
JH-05.
JH-105.
That's why I'm sorry, I have my glasses on. JHO5.
Um, and I'm assuming it's okay for me to go on the DistrictR. So, this map is very similar to Map A, but there are differences. Is it, I believe it's this one.
Okay, now we can, okay.
Was there anything in particular that you liked about this map?
Um, no. No, it just seemed compact. It, it wasn't really scattered, it just kind of popped out. And I know that we have a lot of community members that are really lobbying for this map also. This isn't A, B, or C?
Correct.
No, this would be a new one, new draft.
So, Liz, just, okay, so this is an example of what also could happen.
Yes.
So, she just suggested another map, got it elevated to a draft level. The public, right, so if there's public, I know there's a lot of members of the public that spend a lot of top, time on their map. If they don't see their map on A, B, C, or D, they can reach out to us council members and, and do what they legislate, right? Reach out to us, meet with us, and, and get us to believe in their map, so we'll get it elevated for them, right?
That's correct.
And, and as you were suggesting, Councilmember Ramirez, I mean, so some people have already begun that, right? So, the emails that we've got already, they all say exactly the map that they like.
Yeah.
So, we can continue that.
So, it's now done. It's a draft? Am I understanding you correctly?
I can bring it forward as Draft Map D for the next time, so as long as we're all comfortable, this will be Draft Map D.
Okay.
What is the timetable? If someone wants to submit a new map, what's, what's the expiration time with that?
So, they just need to submit it seven days prior.
To our next meeting?
To the next meeting.
Okay.
So, by next Monday? The deadline to submit a new map will be by next Monday?
The 14th. Okay, just so people understand, the general public understands, we understand that that's the next step, okay?
Yes.
Our next deadline, if you want to submit a map for the 21st.
Yes.
Be considered, yes.
Okay, any further questions for Liz? Okay, let's move on to public comment.
Yes, Mayor Council, we have two speakers. First is Joanne Fierro, followed by Zain Yahya.
And for clarity, we are now opening the public hearing.
Thank you.
Um, I think some of you have been reading some of our emails, but I'm here to promote Map JHO5. Its identified number is 289301. There's also a second choice that would be good if that one didn't quite match your liking, JHO7. I believe that these are cohesive districts on here. There's six cohesive districts with clear boundaries, easily to understand. The deviation is within the guidelines. It really does show the impact of our community of interest. So, I hope you'll look seriously at those. I know there's going to be a lot of maps, but I think that if you go through them and look at them, you'll see which ones are more realistic quickly, and the others will be eliminated just based on the criteria that were given as far as community of interest. So, I hope you find these two good, and thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Zain Yahya, followed by Sally Armanderos.
Good evening, councilmembers. First of all, thank you guys for making this process so public and welcoming. It's been great to see the engagement from the community and the involvement of everybody as well as yourselves. On that note, I mean, I'm looking at the maps, a lot of them seem good and worthy of the, you know, what we're trying to do here. JHO7, which I think was one she put up, looks great to me, so I just wanted to say that would be a good one to use. And just, I like the participation from everybody. It's been great, it's been wonderful to see. I like to see the active invol, involvement of the community, and so, thank you guys for the whole process. And lastly, my pet project would be, why don't we throw in ranked choice voting?
Thanks, Zain. Mr. Final Speaker is Sally Armanderos.
Yes, I'm up here to ask that you adopt Map Number JH05. I am a homeowner for over 60 years and lived in the same area for those 60 years. I've been in Gilroy for over, well, 82 years pretty soon, 83 years. And my neighborhood is off of Murray and Leavesley Road. My immediate neighborhood is connected in many ways, and the area residents have been there for, people around me have been there for over 20 to 40 years. We are all original homeowners, and we all send our children to the same schools and to the same parks. And in my extended neighborhood, and we use the same neighborhood, same parks, our children in the same schools, and, let me see, we share many of the same interests, including our poorly maintained streets, our lack of crosswalks, our, there's no sidewalks in our area, there's ba, there's bad lighting, there's no landscape like you have in the north-west area. Our neighborhood par, we've never had a neighborhood park that has been promised to us by other city councils for the last 40 years. Everybody has to cross Leavesley to go to San Isidro, which is the closest to our neighbor, you know, we do have a, we do have a community of interest there. And our, and our interest is also that we are mostly all working class, we're retired residents, and our, we live in older homes, and our income level is less, is less than any residence of the northwest area. We are very different than northwest area residents. We need our representative for someone who has the same interests and understanding of the needs of our neighborhood, which is our community of interest. So, please, I'm asking you to consider the neighborhood that's been forgotten for many years. Like I said, there's no sidewalks in our side, there's no crosswalks, you know, there's no lighting, nothing compared to what you have on the west side. So, I'm recommending or hoping that you will consider the neighborhood that we're talking about and that is, and you vote for HJ05. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our final speaker. No further? Okay. Any, yeah, go ahead.
Um, we, you know, I think Greg mentioned in his first meeting here about how we are fortunate by having somebody with a lot of historical background here, and I have a question for, actually, to, for Dion to give some, some feedback here if he could in terms of, on that east side, when I look at the map of JH05 and JH07, it's drawn continuously from north to south, and I know some, and, and you even have mentioned this to me, that there's, there are differences north to south, say, at Leavesley or, or close to Leavesley Road with those people. Can you comment on that or provide feedback to, to, to people on that?
Well, like Ms. Armanderos was speaking, the east side is comprised of a lot of old Gilroy families. They've retired, their kids are no longer there, aging in that area. And you also have, it's, some of the east side is kind of rural and borders up with farmland, so there's agriculture roots in the east side. And then, you, you get more towards 10th Street, and it's, again, it's old families, old farming families and stuff, people that have been in Gilroy for generations. So, it, it's some distinct populations in the east side. In the cent, center of the east side, you have a lot of apartments, a lot of renters, and, and so, there's different needs in the east side, I believe.
So, then the communities north to south are not contiguous in terms of community, community of interest, maybe because they're different in, again, you said rural up north, rural down south, and in the center that you have a lot of apartments and, and more compact living, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I think also, I think there is a park, I believe, up in that area too, right? Isn't there Farrell Park?
San Isidro.
No, it's Farrell Park up north, I believe, right?
No, there's no, no other park over there.
There's a park called Farrell Park, I believe, that's right up by the old school.
It's across Monterey, though.
Yeah, it's on the other side of Monterey, but it is on the north section of town, right? I guess, okay. Okay, thank you.
So, I, just-
Sure, go ahead.
So, I just want to reassure the three speakers that came up. I think Joanne wanted JHO7 and JHO5, Zain called out JHO7, and Sally called out JHO5. Map A is JHO7, and Map D, Carol brought that one forward, JHO5. So, just reassure that all, all of those maps are now a part of the A, B, C, D. So, they are moved up to consideration.
Any other comments or questions?
So, as we discussed earlier, we're not looking for action, and it feels like you have some direction. And I will say again, that the public can continue to interact with the website and, and DistrictR to make sure that you, you receive further information. Okay? Any, any requests from you as we end?
Um, I do want to point out that as drawn, the map, JHO5, when we look at the evaluation, there are three districts over 50% Latino C-VAP, and then one that is very close where we, I would recommend that you request that we make that over 50%. So, we can take this map and then make changes to bring that into over 50% Latino C-VAP.
What number map is that again, please? Is it right?
Uh, so, it's 289301. JH, yes.
The one that Councilmember Marx mentioned and that two people mentioned here?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Or I can leave it as is, but my recommendation would be to make that over 50%.
Councilmember Marx, any, 1.7% we're talking about?
Um, so, you would be doing District 5? If you were to add two?
Correct. I would make some changes to that.
Okay, you would call it, take from District 6?
Um.
To make, to make it higher?
There's, yeah, I can take it from three, four, and six.
Or three.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's no problem.
Yeah, I think you're already answered.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. We would like to, item number eight is going to take quite some time, so we would like to get through a couple of other items that I believe will be much shorter, and then we will take a break, and then we will do, I'm sorry?
Eight.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. Item number nine. Where am I making a mistake here? So, we just finished 8.1, correct? Okay.
Correct. 7.2 needs to be done.
Okay. So, we're going to do 7.2, and we're also going to do, did I make a mistake again? We are also going to do 9.2, then take a break, and then do 9.1. So, moving on to 7.2, awarded contractor to Dewberry Engineers, Engineers for Lyons Creek Consultant Services in the amount of $189,652.26. Daniel? Oh, John?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and community. I'm here tonight to request to re-initiate work on the Lyons Creek Trail. This trail represents a critical link piece between Tapestry and Kern Avenue, and really represents a broader connection all the way to Church and Farrell area with this. So, it's a much larger and much broader extension, but this is a missing link piece to that point. This project was moving forward almost a decade ago, but was put on hold because of funding considerations. We have received grant funding, which has now allowed us to proceed with this proposal before you. This basically represents the beginning and ending point of what this project would deal with, this being at Kern, and this being at Tapestry or the extension of Tapestry here right at Christopher High School. As I said, this again, you know, is a broader perspective, though, reaching further to the east and provides, I think, critical connection point for particularly bicycle, but pedestrian as well, between those areas and into the Christopher High School and the Aquatics Center. As noted, the city was successful in receiving grant awards, a federal grant and a California Recreation Trails Program, and this allows us to, to move forward. California Recreation Trails Program, and, um, this allows us to, to move forward, um, if so directed. Uh, Dewberry Engineers, um, was, um, or at least a subsidiary or connected, they've consolidated, as the staff report indicated, with another firm, um, the prior engineer. But this basically is the same engineering firm that prepared the sixty-five percent design, and the recommendation is that, um, we proceed with a sole source procurement in that regards, and that has been confirmed with Caltrans for that purpose. Uh, this project would include, uh, this portion of the project would include design of the, of the trail, um, to the hundred percent bid, uh, package. Um, it would include a design of an at-grade pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Santa Teresa and Day Road East. Uh, it includes permitting, including valley water, and ultimately, um, update of the environmental documents that were prepared earlier for this. Again, um, tonight's proposal is for a design, um, element at one hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-two, twenty-six cents. This is, uh, split between the federal funding that was provided and a local match, which is gas tax funds. In the end, um, because of, um, the allowances here, we're looking at a five percent total match to the project, um, and that five percent total match would not be general fund, but would be gas tax funds in the overall project, um, rather than the twenty percent indicated for a normal, uh, project, as the federal government will allow, uh, for a portion of this other project, um, funding source to be used as, uh, match funds. Our recommendation tonight is to award the contract, uh, for Dewberry Engineers, Inc., in the amount of one, one hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-six cents, and authorize the city administrator to execute.
Councilmember Fugazi.
A quick question, with the design-build capabilities that we have in the city now, uh, I get when it was done before, it was done with Dewberry, right? Would there be any reason for us to want to do it with a single company and design-build and do all the work, or does that not apply here?
I don't, I, this would be a unique design-build project in, in my estimation. I mean, it's, it, um, and, in addition, Dewberry already has designed up to sixty-five percent, so we're looking just to complete that work that was prepared earlier from them, and so then you would have this connection of who is and, and force them necessarily to, to go into a contractor, um, role, so I'm not sure that that's, um, the best situation in this ti- at this time.
But it was considered?
It was not considered, frankly.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ramirez.
So, this is, this contract is for just the design?
This is for completion of design, for environmental work, and permitting.
Okay, and then, do we have the funds to build?
Yes, we believe that we have the funds to build. This was, um, at the point of the grant getting, there was value engineering, um, worked through this project, and we believe that there is sufficient funds to continue to move forward to project construction.
Perfect, that's great to know. And then where are those funds coming from, those build funds?
Again, uh, the build funds are coming from primarily a federal grant.
Still from the grant?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And when is, um, date of completion?
Well, sorry, we are looking to complete this work in, um, early twenty-twenty-six, and we would award, um, and go out to bid, and hopefully award within, um, twenty-twenty-six. This is, should not be an extensive construction schedule, so, um, optimally, say, mid-twenty-twenty-seven, all things working perfectly.
Public comment?
Uh, we have no speakers.
Okay.
I'll move.
Okay, so I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for item seven point two, to award a contractor Dewberry Engineers for Lyons Creek Consultant Services in the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-six cent. Real call, please.
Councilmember Bracco.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Marks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Yes.
Mayor Bozso. Yes, motion passes seven to zero.
And for the record, since the agenda item also includes the authorization to sign, uh, my assumption is that, that motion included such authorization? Is that correct, Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Yes, she confirms it's correct.
Thank you very much. Okay, as I mentioned before, we are going to jump to item nine point two, uh, downtown parklet update, and staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and members of the committee. Got an update on the downtown parklet today. Uh, at the January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four City Council meeting, council directed the Downtown Committee to research and develop the downtown parklet program, and since then, the Downtown Committee has been meeting regularly to discuss parklet requirements. After several months of discussion at the October eighth, twenty-twenty-four Downtown Committee meeting, the committee voted to recommend no new parklets on Monterey Street between First and Tenth Streets, and also side streets between Railroad and Eagleberry Streets. The committee also voted to forward Steve Campbell's parklet requirements for consideration, and to require existing parklets to comply. And after that, staff researched Steve Campbell's parklet requirements, and we also met with, um, Steve Campbell's economic development and public work staff, who developed and have been administering Campbell's program. Um, the, the January fourteenth and February four, Downtown Committee, uh, twenty-twenty-five Downtown Committee meetings, staff presented Campbell's parklet requirements, and also the modifications that would be, and needed to be made to the existing parklet in front of Temple. And this analysis led to the conclusion that the existing parklet in front of Temple would have to undergo complete redesign and reconstruction in order to meet Campbell's parklet requirements. Since the analysis showed that the parklet in front of Temple has to be demolished and rebuilt in order to meet Campbell's requirements, and yet, no new parklet on Monterey Street was, uh, recommended by the Downtown Committee. This discussion led to, uh, was held as to whether the modification would constitute a demolition, then a rebuild of a new parklet. And after discussion, the committee voted seven to three to not allow a rebuild of the parklet in front of Temple, as this would constitute a new parklet, which the committee previously voted to not allow on Monterey Street. So, this means the parklet in front of Temple would need to be demolished and not to be rebuilt. And I know there are a lot of words on the site, but it kind of went through, you know, the, the rationale of how the committee got to its recommendation. And so, staff recommendation tonight is forwarding the Downtown Committee's, uh, recommendation to the City Council, um, to receive the report regarding an update on downtown parklet and accept the recommendation from the Downtown Committee. No new parklets on Monterey Street between First and Tenth Streets, as well as side streets between Railroad and Eagleberry Streets, requiring existing parklets to comply with Campbell's parklet requirements, and the two previous recommendations leading to the recommendation, that the parklet in front of the Temple Kitchen and Bar be demolished and not rebuilt. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Glenn? Any comments, public comments, please?
Yes, Mayor, we have two. Uh, first Tom Miller, followed by Dan Nelson.
Hello, and first off, I want to thank everybody for your time, because I know it's not easy, Josh. But another thing I just want to mention is kind of, I told most of you my history, and I just want to tell some of the new guys again. You know, I grew up here, I was in third grade, went to Gavin Col- all the way through graduate college for a year and a half. The reason why I bought, um, Tempo, or the, it was seventy-six, seventy-five, sixty Monterey Road, was because I liked to see the vitality of downtown. When I grew up here, downtown was thriving. That's where everybody went, and I wanted to see that. And so, my desire to put this parklet here was to make downtown more vibrant. I have six tenants in the building. The building is completely rented. I'm not doing it to make money, I'm doing it to bring people downtown, because all those tenants bring people downtown. So, this whole concept of, uh, you know, doing it because I'm a building owner is, I mean, granted, oh, I'd like to take advantage of it, but it's not the reason why I did it, at all. Um, you know, nine years ago, we did it. Every city is thankful for the benefits that parklet has done to their downtown, every one of them, Santa Clara, Alameda. Now, they are adjusting their perspective, because it worked. It drove business downtown. Now, all those downtowns that had parklets are thriving. Now, Campbell, they're thinking, they're going back a little bit, going, we can't have too many, we have to, now that we're thriving, it did its job, now we have to reevaluate. For Gilroy to cancel that right away, without even starting, what every city, and this is every, I'm not talking, I mean, there's not a single, I don't think there's very many cities that don't have any parklets, and they'll, and Gilroy will be one of them. So, you know, now you take a look, you, you walk between fifth and, uh, fifth and sixth, you walk, and what you do, when you're walking down, you see parking lots and a, and asphalt. You wa- the, the building between, um, our street, fourth and fifth, had the most development since we bought the building and put the, put the parklet in. Fourth and third, I mean, fifth and sixth, had none. Fourth and fifth had four, and it's still thriving, and then we know that's a factor, what they picked for, for Gil- for going there. Um, just take a walk, I mean, if you guys, I'm, I'm sure you guys, after this, making this decision, you walked Fifth Street, fourth, sixth to fifth, you walked it, and then you walked the fourth to fifth and saw the difference, and I can't believe that you guys would think that that walkway from fifth to sixth is, is beneficial. Parklet is a different, is different than looking at a building or looking at a parking lot. It creates an, an environment for, of activity. So, I, um, I hope you understand and see the value of the parklets of downtown and, and support the stay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, on a separate thing, Dan was going to speak, but he had a emergency, a family emergency, very bad family emergency, so he's not going to be able to speak.
Thank you, Thompson, thank you. Comments? Go ahead.
So, um, what if we did like we did with, uh, the one on Fifth Street? Uh, leave it there, and if the restaurant changes hands, it has to be removed?
That's what I was going to suggest.
You know, I, I think that would be a fairer way to do it, because, you know, we did approve it originally, i- it was supposedly a pro- pilot, and, uh, but, you know, it, it does have some problems. The neighbors complained about it. Um, so, um, there, there's going to be some, some things that need to be done on your part also, to, to help alleviate those, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Klein.
I know we gave direction to, to Downtown Committee, to look at the parklet, to develop a parklet program, see what's out there. Um, my position from the very beginning was against parklets, I, I was vocal about that. I actually think the building there, Temple, is one of the better-looking fronts of buildings that we have downtown. Mr. Miller's done a great job architecturally, and what he's done with the design, and sometimes the parklet would hide those features. So, for me, looking at it from an architectural sense, I, I think it's better without, but again, that's just me. I just also agree with the decision, we asked for that, and so, I don't know, it's, it's up, I, I have one vote, but I, I don't know, we gave direction to that committee, and they came back with that information, and they said no, for it to go away. So, I, I'm just going by the recommendation, but again, everyone has an opinion on that, I'm both in mind, so.
Councilmember Fugazi.
For me, it's to be a much easier decision if much of the premise of the things that we hear were played out in reality from what I've seen with my own eyes. That is, if it was a vibrant, uh, people partying in the parklet all the time, utilizing it, we have an audience full of people saying, please don't take it away, uh, and all of that, that would make it really easy to say, what are we doing? Uh, unfortunately, that is not the case. Uh, amount of time that I spend downtown and, and others I've spoken to don't see, uh, that space utilized that much. It interferes with the frontage on adjoining properties. Uh, we have the Downtown Committee that spent a lot of time and effort, um, uh, in a lot of meetings, some which I sat on and some which I was in the audience for. Uh, I think there's a, a lot that has been put into looking at how this fits into the rest of downtown. I also don't necessarily think that correlation leads to causation in terms of, okay, this thing came around, and now all of a sudden, things are going really great downtown. I don't necessarily believe that either. Um, I also don't necessarily think it's fair to have the property owner pay necessarily to take it down. So, the one thing I would add to this is similar, since we ended up, for whatever reason, I believe, and Jimmy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, take this, took, took down the one at Station Fifty-Five, if the property owner, and it, it so, uh, comes about that, uh, we give a decision not to have it there downtown, that some way that we can assist or pay or whatever in the dismantling of that, uh, particular parklet in the same way that we did with Station Fifty-Five, and that's all I got to say.
As Chair of the Downtown Committee, I feel we owe a responsibility to the committee to follow what their recommendation was. They have spent a lot of time looking into other cities. Um, this was not done just in a fly-by-night attitude. Um, we spent months on this, and if this parklet was allowed to stay, it would have to be, as Sharon said, rebuilt completely, because we wanted to follow the Campbell requirements. Um, it doesn't have the traffic that it once did in the beginning, it's been very, very quiet. So, I would like, I would have to abide by what the Downtown Committee's recommendation is, out of good faith, as, as the Chair of that committee.
Additional comments? I have one. So, um, first of all, I'd like to thank the Downtown Committee for the time they've put into this. You guys have been working on this committee for a lot longer than I've even been here, so I'm the new guy. Um, I do have a problem with the idea of asking someone to demolish their, the, their property for some principal reasons. I believe that as a city, we enter into agreements certainly by the letter of the law, but we also do it by the spirit of the law. And at the time when, um, Mr. Miller and his group came to town, we welcomed them with open arms, we wanted investment in downtown Gilroy, everybody had high hopes for that building, and, um, and, and his group put up, they put up the money, they put up, they did what this community wanted them to do. And, um, so for me, as a small business owner, I have a hard time asking somebody to demolish their property, when at one point, as Councilmember Fugazi said, we entered an agreement with them and, and allowed them to do it. So, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Bracco, that I would like to see us, um, hold off on the demolition portion. I appreciate very, 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 very much the idea that we are getting some direction with no new parklets on the rest of Monterey Street. So, that's my recommendation.
All right, I just would like to say one more thing, as a clarification, Sharon, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we were investigating the parklet idea, we found out that Tempo's parklet was never given a permanent status by the city. It could have been, it, their permit could be revoked at any time.
No, I, yeah.
And so, they entered that agreement knowing that it was not permanent.
Sure, I should have said that, I'm glad you said that, and that's why I said, there's the letter of the law and the spirit of the law, and, in the spirit of the law, I believe that, that in good faith, they built this, and that the next tenant, in good faith, rented from them, because it's there. I know it's not as popular as we want it to be, but, um, that's why I have a hard time with demolishing. So, any other comments?
Another question, I mean, what is your feeling, again, if, from a small business perspective, with it encroaching on the frontage of other properties? Again, that was a decision made before, but we're here to look at the city now.
Yeah.
So, that we obviously have another business, uh, member in, in the city who also puts a lot of time and effort and money into developing in the city, and it's encroaching on the frontage of that particular property.
I have absolutely no problem seeing us asking the building owner to make some changes.
And would you support the Campbell recommendations?
Well, if it's- Well, if it's, if we support the Campbell recommendations, knowing that he's gonna have to tear it down, then no, I wouldn't. I would support the Campbell recommendations with the idea that, you know, the existing Parklet could be altered in the best way possible. Again, I'm gonna keep falling back on the spirit of the law and the letter of the law. Gilroy does not have the best reputation in the world of enforcing all the rules. So the idea that we have to enforce this law because this ruled in contract, because he entered it knowing that it was potentially, uh, revocable, that doesn't sit well with me. Councilmember Bracco?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, let the Parklet stay for now, as long as, uh, Tempo is in business. If it sells or goes out of business, then it, it, Parklet's gotta be removed. And, um, that it be inspected by the city, and whatever repairs the city deems necessary for it to be up to code.
And what about the idea that Councilmember Fugati had about it being in front of another building?
Well, the, uh, our inspection will show that, and if it's gotta be, um, trimmed part of it away, then that's, because it's not fair to another business, that, that it be encroaching and blocking his building.
So do you wanna add that to your motion, that it cannot encroach?
Yes.
On another business? So then there would have to be some remodeling of it done? If, if, if that motion?
Yeah, that would be between him and the city. You got that, Sharon?
Yeah, Councilmember Bracco, I would like Sharon to talk about that because of the building issues with the current structure. So Sharon, if you could help us.
Yes, yeah, I think there, um, there's no current regulations for the Parklets that it cannot, you know, block a certain building. I mean, that's the reason, I think, you know, the Committee was directed to develop, uh, those Parklet requirements. So right now, there is no, uh, standard when it comes to that, and...
Well, I'm making it a condition of us letting it stay, that it can't block another business.
So that's the requirement from tonight, is?
I think the question is, Sharon, is, is it, is it possible that this particular Parklet can be modified without tearing it down, so that it, it sits better without, um, you know, blocking other properties? Is that possible in your inspections that you've seen?
Uh, I guess we'll have to, you know, actually look at it and do measurements exactly how much, if any, if blocking.
I think the point I'm trying to make is, we don't know the answer to that question, because there's gas lines in it, you're asking somebody to cut up metal. I mean, the thing was put in to, to survive.
Yeah, which part of the structure, you know, you might have to modify.
But his motion could be contingent on that, too.
Absolutely.
I, I, I think that what it would be is, leave it up until, eh, 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 business changes, cannot block the, the neighbor's, uh, you know, frontage, and should it not be modified, modifiable to be able to do so, then it would have to come down.
Yeah.
That's the contingency.
And I, are you including, number one, no new Parklets?
Well, that was part of this as well, right? So that's what you...
Well, yeah, I just wanna make sure that that is a part of it. Thank you.
So is that a second? Councilmember Fugati?
With those conditions, I'll, I'll second it.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
Councilmember Fugati?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Uh, no.
Uh, Mayor, go so. Yes. Motion passes four to three. Let's take a break. Okay, we are going to continue the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Um, but I have some new orders of the day. We, um, in the nature, in the, in the essence of time, um, I would like to, uh, pull item nine, nine point one, Strategic Planning Session Number Three of Economic Development, um, because we expected that to be quite long, um, at least an hour. And, um, we would like to do that another time when we have much more time. Do I wanna get a thumbs up approval or disapproval from council? Okay, done. Now, moving on to item ten, Introduction to New Business, ten point one, Approve a School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding for Fiscal Yield Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six, a staff report by Captain Juan Rocha.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Administrator, and members of the community. Uh, thank you for allowing me to present tonight on our School Resource Officer Program. Uh, joining me tonight is Officer Dustin Odell, who is one of two SROs. Um, the other officer is Officer Estella Rocha. She could not be here tonight. Uh, but she's been with us for a little bit over ten years, and actually started out as a dispatcher. Uh, she is bilingual. She's fluent in Spanish. Uh, and Officer Odell has also been with us for over ten years. And he was recently assigned, uh, his new partner, Officer Maui, uh, who has actually been quite a hit at the, uh, at the schools, so much that, um, Officer Odell feels a little bit left out from all the, uh, the attention that Maui gets. Um, so our, our SRO program has evolved, um, obviously with time. Um, but I'd like to point out that our, um, relationship or, or SRO program was established in nineteen eighty-five, um, in partnership with, uh, the Gilroy Unified School District. Uh, but really, we have, currently, we have six primary purposes for the SRO program. And the number one purpose of the SRO program is to maintain a safe and secure campus for both students and staff. Number two is to preserve life and property in a manner that promotes community. Uh, number three is to develop positive relationships with students, staff, and the community. Uh, next is support GUSD staff in securing and transporting of prohibited confiscated items that are illegal to have on campus under California law. Number five is to divert youth away from the criminal justice system through the restorative justice programming. And number six is to connect, uh, the youth with mental health behavioral services. And so our SROs are always, um, their training and development is ongoing, and either, uh, both of our SROs, or at least one, have attended, um, one or all of these trainings, uh, the Juvenile Justice Restorative Practices, Crisis Intervention Training, LGBTQ+ Awareness, De-escalation, Active Shooter. Uh, they've attended school safety symposiums. Uh, they've attended training with the Youth Diversion, Crisis Support One-O-One for children and adolescents, Youth Mental First Aid, and Behavioral Threat Assessment. And as you can see, Maui is now in every photo that we have of our SROs. And so for call activity for, uh, for our SROs, we've had nine hundred and twenty-eight calls for service between February twenty-fourth, or February twenty-twenty-four and February twenty-twenty-five of this year. Uh, as you can tell, most of the calls, or a majority of the calls, were at Gilroy High School, a hundred and ninety-nine, and then followed by other. And what other means is, um, any kind of call for service that, um, uh, that somehow, well, uh, it could be like, uh, anywhere from a suspicious vehicle that's down the block from a school, uh, where the SROs, uh, or patrol gets dispatched, but the SROs hear about the call. They try to get ahead of it, since it's, it might be a little bit too close to the school, so they, um, were counting for those. Um, something else could be, um, parents calling the SROs to do a home visit with maybe a student or a, a child of theirs that maybe don't wanna go to school. Um, so like a counseling session. Number three was Christopher High with a hundred and forty-nine, um, and followed by some of the middle schools, and Mount Madonna with thirty-four, and then you have your, um, elementary schools. And in the same timeframe, February, February twenty-twenty-four to February of this year, we had, uh, thirty-seven juvenile arrests, which is down from seventy-eight the year prior. Um, and the breakdown, um, as you can see, Gilroy High had seventeen, Christopher High had six, and Community had seven. And what that means is that the SROs made the arrest away from campus, maybe at their home, but it's related to an incident that occurred at the school, at one of the schools. And so our SROs are super busy. Uh, here's some, some of the, um, more duties that they perform on a day-to-day. Uh, they, you know, in the same timeframe, they did ninety-seven presentations, uh, two hundred and sixty-two counseling sessions, uh, again, nine hundred and twenty-eight calls for service at the schools. They took two hundred and twenty-two police reports. Out of the thirty-seven arrests that I mentioned in the, uh, previous slide, two of those were transported to juvenile hall. Um, eighteen school-related trainings, fifty-seven school-related meetings, and then, uh, direct phone contact with staff or teachers, four hundred and two, um, in that timeframe. So last week, on April third, uh, G, GUSD approved the renewal of the, uh, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six SRO Program MOU for two SROs. And additionally, uh, the, the district sent out an annual survey, uh, to students, staff, and families, and overall, ninety-point-six percent of the responses, uh, uh, show that they support the presence of SROs on school As far as fiscal impact, um, total cost for two SROs is six hundred thousand, thirty-seven dollars. Uh, so half of that, uh, would be three hundred thousand, eighteen dollars. As far as recommendation, uh, staff is requesting the City Council to authorize the City Administrator to renew the MOU between the City and GUSD for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, and continue our partnership. So with that, I will take any questions.
Councilmember Fugati?
Uh, question on the, uh, on the pay breakdown and the, uh, I think I saw that there was a, an amount for salary and amount for, uh, other, or how was it broken down? It was about, uh, it was a little over double, sorry, it's, it's a little over, about fifteen percent more than the salary for all of the, uh, for the other, uh, item. Does that include the overtime, or is there overtime included in any of them?
I'm sorry, it'd be benefits.
So overtime is included in the benefits line?
No, no. So it'd be, uh, medical insurance, uh, work and comp, um, bilingual pay.
So bilingual pay is part of the, is part of the benefits?
Correct. If they qualify for Master Officer Pay, uh, they would receive an additional benefit.
Okay, so it's, it's standard and normal, it's about a hundred and twenty percent of their salary?
Um, I don't have a percentage.
Um, other question, which is more related to Maui. Um, what happens if there's an incident and you have Maui and, and something goes down, uh, at the school? What happens with the dog at that point? Because it's not a trained, like, to be in the incident, right, type dog? So what happens?
So normally, the SRO, uh, when he has the dog out, or Maui, uh, not, usually he's near either his office or his patrol car, where he could secure, um, the dog.
But if you're just out on the campus or what have you, and something goes down, you just let the dog go, or, I mean, just, I mean, I'm just curious. It's a curiosity more than anything of...
I, I mean, he would be forced to multitask and, you know, care for the dog and, and, uh, you know, take whatever action needs to be taken.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes, um, why, why the, why do you think there's such a big difference between, um, the incidents at Gilroy High and Christopher?
I, I can't attribute that to any one thing. Um, you know, sometimes you get a fight involving numerous kids, and that's a, a big portion of your, your stats.
Okay, thank you.
Similar data anomaly I saw was Brownell had a higher amount of calls for service than South Valley, but had very few, uh, in the arrest section. Is, is there any kind of other reasoning behind that, too?
As to why there's a lower number of arrests versus the calls for service?
Yeah, there's way more calls for service at, at Brownell, but there's only one incident at Brownell compared to four at South Valley, which had less calls for service.
So we have, uh, got it. Um, again, it could be the type of incident. It could be one incident that involves more than one, uh, student.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, um, regarding the MOU, um, is that, are those dollars already stated in the MOU, and that percentage already stated in the MOU, or do you have to negotiate that when you meet them?
It's been the typical agreed-upon percentage that it's fifty-fifty. Uh, one party does not have to pay, um, I mean, especially from the city side. We technically don't have to pay anything, but it's been a partnership and been an investment, so it's just been the agreement.
Yeah, I completely support the SRO program, and I support the fifty-fifty. I just wanted, you know, I just wondered if you, you know, ever go into these, and then all of a sudden they're saying, well, we can only afford thirty percent. We want you to take the seventy percent.
Uh, I think both entities at certain times have had financial issues, and so it's just, it, I'm sorry, uh, for lack of a better answer, it's always been done fifty-fifty. I don't think there's ever been a request to pick up more cost or to change that share. I don't think that conversation's ever occurred.
Thank you.
Um, I'll add to that really quick, too. When I watched the GUSD Board meeting, one thing that they talk about is that not only are they investing in the wellness centers and all those different things, and they're all at various stages, so that could be one of the reasons why. And we talk about this at the South County Task Force meeting. There's, there's, sometimes there's just more interventions at more schools than there are at others, and some are well, much more, more developed and funded and have staff, so that could play a role in it. But there is, at least to know that there is the South County Task Force that looks at this, like, constantly, more than just once a year. Um, but they also stated that, you know, that, um, they talked about, like, school safety is, you know, part of their goal, and their, and, school safety is, is a reflection of their values, which is in their budget. So I don't think that they would ever try to come back and say, like, oh, this is a tough year, can you do more? And it seems to, like, like City Administrator just mentioned, like, this is something that is, has always been a goal for us, too, so it's common, like a fifty-fifty.
Any further questions for Captain Rocha? Public comment, please?
Yes, Mayor, we have three speakers. Uh, first is Greg Philios, followed by Ron Kirkish.
Hello, public servants. I support the School Resource Officer Program. I'll tell you why. This is an, the Gilroy Unified School District, I was one of the speakers I publicly commented to the Gilroy Unified School District about the two wonderful officers that we have. We have Officer Odell's here, Officer Rocha. Again, we have one male and we have one female. And isn't it, it's wonderful to have Officer Rocha, uh, this female being a role model for other girls to look up to. These two serve as a liaison between schools and the law enforcement community. This is, the, the schools can rely on these two. Instead of having to pull an officer from one of the quadrants, they can call directly to our School Resource Officers. The, what a great, what a great connection to have for the schools to have this support of these School Resource Officers, instead of having to pull somebody out of the general public. We have these trained officers, uh, and they're very well-respected and well-liked by, eh, eh, as, as was seen, um, when I spoke to the, and, and, uh, Captain Rocha pointed out that ninety percent, they did, and they did this, they, I'm glad they got the data, they did a survey of the students, faculty, and staff, and ninety percent supported the SROs. That's a, that's a big deal. So when, and so when the, the voting came up, oh, should we support this? Gilroy Unified School District voted six to one. And it might have been seven oh, except for, again, the issue of it being a, uh, money isn't being issued, but this is money well-spent, I think. And I think, I think you should all support this, uh, the continued support of, uh, of these officers, and Gilroy wants them, Gilroy Unified School District wants them, and we in the community, uh, support this also. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ron Kirkish, followed by Maria Aguilar.
Good to see you again, Mayor and Council. Uh, nine hundred and twenty-five calls a day, a, a, a year. Now, a year isn't necessarily three hundred and sixty-five days. It doesn't include weekends, and probably some vacation days, too, summers and stuff like that. So when you tally that and divide, kind of approximately, that's almost three calls a day that these officers get. That's a lot. The last meeting we had on this subject with the school board, they actually said they would like to have more SROs. And I think that's a, I think I agree. We... We need more of you guys. So I think it's important that we keep this program going. Thank you.
And our final speaker, Maria Aguilar.
This might be a little bit off topic, but I did hear some alarming news that there's a lot of drug use and sales at Christopher High School. So it kind of shocks me that the percentage of calls out there are less than Gilroy High School. Thank you.
We have no more speakers. Any further questions? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Um, I, I think that is an important thing, what, what this gentleman talked about, eh, how the LCAP survey, that, that is one of the ways, that, one of the first things you said is we've come a long way with this program, and we have, right? The community spoke up several years ago and we wanted to do things different, and we have. And we have a good balance now. But that is one of the things that we asked them to do is to send out surveys during their LCAP every year, talk about how do staff like SROs, how do the students like SROs, how do the parents like SROs? Um, I, you know, I fill it out with my daughter. It's, I think it's called a climate survey also at the middle schools. And so that isn't a data point that we always ask for. Um, and it is overwhelming. Obviously, it's never going to be a hundred percent, but, but it is overwhelming support continuously. So, thank you.
Motion. Uh, motion. Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on item ten point one to adopt a resolution of the City Council, of the City of Gilroy authorizing the City Administrator entered into agreement between the City of Gilroy and Gilroy Unified School District for two school resource officers, including cost sharing for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. Roll call, please. Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fugazi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mayor Bozzo?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item number eleven, future council-initiated agenda items, we have none. Item number twelve, City Administrator's report. No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, could I interrupt for just one quick second? Just a question for the City Administrator. Um, so I know that you like to bring back the Santa Teresa station updates, you know, as like progress or whatever, like as you see fit, as things move forward. Um, I was just hoping that maybe either during those updates or whenever you see fit. But we have a hundred and twenty days, we have a new tenant that's going to be out at that fire station, and it's in order to ensure that we all know and the community knows that we actually have an agreement, a mutual agreement with county fire, our new tenant. Um, if you could just provide an update during your regular updates, um, on that, I think that would be nice. And maybe that coincides with the Santa Teresa, um, you know, stuff that the city wants to find out, too, then so be it. That's it.
Item number thirteen, City Attorney's report.
Uh, no report.
Okay, we will move to closed session.
Okay, I will, uh, read the agenda items. This is going to take a little bit of time, as you can see. Uh, fourteen point one is conference of real property negotiator pursuant to government code five four nine five six point eight and Gilroy City Code seventeen A eight. Property APNs are listed on the, um, agenda. Negotiator is Jimmy Forbes. Other party is Jessup Roberta, a trustee, Jessup Transportation, Inc., and under negotiations, price and terms of payment. Fourteen point two is another conference of real property negotiators pursuant to the same code sections, property APN eight forty-one eighty-four zero zero nine. Negotiator Jimmy Forbes. Other party negotiation, McCarthy Gilroy LLC, under negotiation price and terms of payment. Fourteen point three, conference of labor negotiators, collective bargaining units pursuant to Gilroy, uh, governing code, excuse me, section five four nine five seven point six. Gilroy Code, section seventeen A eleven four. Collective bargaining units are the Gilroy Police Officers Association, representing Gilroy police officers, Gilroy Management Association, representing mid-management employees, GMA, and unrepresented exempt employees, confidential department heads and council-appointed. City negotiators Jimmy Forbes, Leanne McPhillips, assistant, um, yes. Anticipated issues, wages, hours, benefits, working conditions. Memorams of understanding, City of Gilroy and Gilroy Police Officers Association and City of Gilroy and Gilroy Management Association. Fourteen point four is conference of legal counsel pending litigation, pending litigation pursuant to paragraph one of subdivision D of Government Code, section five four nine five six point nine, Gilroy City Code, section seventeen A eleven three A, Gendolfi v. City of Gilroy, uh, the Superior Court case number twenty-four CB four 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 one six five, filed July twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Fourteen point five, another conference of real property negotiators pursuant to the government code, section five four nine five six point eight and Gilroy City Code, section seventeen A eight. Property is the Gilroy Gardens Theme Park at thirty fifty Hecker Pass Highway. APNs listed on the agenda. Negotiator is Jimmy Forbes, Victoria Valencia. Other party negotiations is Gilroy Gardens Family Theme Park, under negotiation price and terms of payment, for sale or lease. Lastly, fourteen point six, public employee appointment slash employment pursuant to Government Code, section five four nine five seven, Gilroy City Code, section seventeen A eleven two. Name is, or title is Fire Chief. That completes the agenda items. Now we should take public comment if there is any? Is there none?
We have no speakers.
Okay, with respect to the litigation closed session, then, it is my advice that discussing this matter in open session would prejudice the interests of the city, and I therefore recommend we go into closed session. We do need to take a vote on that one item right now. So we need a public vote in order to go into closed session on the litigation item.
Okay. Everybody okay with going into closed session? Question? Okay.
Okay, the, the vote is unanimous. Once we get into closed session, we need a further vote on whether to stay into closed session on the other five items, and that will be a reportable action. Okay.
Thank you.
Now we're in the closed session.
All right.